I have a disclosure as well.
Okay, I have the chair.
Okay, yeah, I've also taken part in Four Valleys. I was a volunteer teacher-coach for a few years.
Great. I rule that is not a conflict and you are okay to vote.
Thank you. Okay, anything else? If not, we'll move on to the agenda. Looking for a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
This is Brianna. I move to approve tonight's agenda.
Thank you. Any second?
I'll second.
Thank you. We'll do this by voice vote. All those in favor? I?
Aye.
Aye.
Any against? Okay, that sounded like unanimous approval. Announcements, the public is encouraged to ask questions and provide comments. Please raise your hand and wait to be acknowledged. To help discussions stay productive, please direct your comments to the board rather than other members of the public, and keep your comments focused on the business under discussion. Please be respectful of everyone's opinions. Item number one, the agenda review grant process, et cetera. I think this is over to you, Margaret.
Yeah, just briefly. As the Board of Supervisors are aware, they went through and did some fine tuning on their grant documents. So there shouldn't be anything here that looks particularly new because we really only finished that process recently. So what's up on the screen right now is the information for for our grant reviewers, reminding them of the timing of the process. So we'll be looking at these and making formal votes on the amounts that will be granted to each of the grantees at the next regular meeting of the Board of Supervisors on November 15th. Our full amount among the majority of the grantees is 35,000, with the Four Valleys Community School hard funded at 25,000. As you'll see here, there's a rating system, restrictions on the funding, evaluation criteria. And then working down each of our grantees has an evaluation worksheet that's set up for you to use in the grant packet. You'll want to print this off probably because you'll need to provide me with a copy of it. You'll do your scoring one to five on the various areas. And then at the bottom, you will put your recommended funding amount. Your recommended funding amounts, when you add them all together, shouldn't exceed the 25,000 for Four Valleys and the 35,000 among the others. So that part is key. And then when we all get together in November, we will be averaging out the amounts that the supervisors have determined. There'll be an opportunity for comments among and discussion among the board members at that time. So you may make some adjustments to your numbers between when you were thinking of them at home and when you got around to the meeting on the 15th. I wanted to share one other thing. So not sure how well this is showing up for you. Probably not that great. Get it over. Oops. Whoa, it's getting worse. What I'm trying to do is show you where we are with our values. So right now, among all of our grantees, we have a request totaling 39.6. So there will definitely be some paring down to do. And this is the history of how these grants have been in the past, funded in the past. So that. Go back over here. So in the grant packet is, like I said, a score sheet for each of the grant applicants. And also eventually come to our first one, which is Challenge Alaska.
Okay, so we'll move. Good segue, Margaret. So we'll, let's move directly into the presentations. So first to go is Challenge Alaska. Is that Nate presenting?
That would be. Can everybody hear and see me?
That sounds great. Please go ahead.
Okay. Well, hello and thank you all for allowing me to present tonight. Challenge Alaska is proud to be celebrating our 40th anniversary of operations this year. Can't believe how far we've come in those 40 years. While these last almost two years have been a struggle operationally, Challenge Alaska has been able to be a bright spot in the pandemic, maintaining almost all of our programs. I'd like to focus tonight on our operations in the Girdwood Valley. We're honored to continue full operations of our adapted ski school with zero COVID-related closures last year. Demand for the community use of the Kyle Center for Therapeutic Recreation, otherwise known as Challenge Shalae, overall has been down this year just because there's been fewer community events. So in lieu of that, we increased the amount that we reduce our usage fees for community-based functions within our facility. Of note, we helped the Girdwood-based graduates have a graduation celebration. We helped host a prom for many of the kids. We continued our wonderful partnership with Girdwood Fine Arts Camp. They had a fantastic camp this last year. Overall, we provided over $21,000 in scholarships to individuals and subsidies to Girdwood-based groups such as Girdwood Fine Arts Camp, Alaska Ski Patrol, local individuals living with disability in the form of adaptive ski lessons, as well as training our volunteer base on adaptive and general ski and snowboard instruction. We are looking forward to continuing another year of responsible, yet fun operations. We're all eager and excited to get this season going. We ramped up our staffing for the season already and we're primed and ready to go. I hope all of you had a chance to come down and enjoy the drive-in movie theater this weekend. We tried to have it be a family-friendly and local-centric event, and I hope you all enjoyed that. With that, I'll keep it brief. Does anybody have any questions for what Challenge Alaska does? What we will do with these much-needed funds? And how we plan to continue to support the community of Girdwood in the coming year?
Okay, are there any questions in the board? Okay, last one question. I know you do go into some detail here, but is there anything you're doing differently this year or any new initiatives you're taking on?
So actually, yeah, for this year, we're hoping to be in a place where we're going to start year-round operations out of the Kyle Center for Adaptive Recreation. We have funding through the Department of Veterans Affairs to expand our mountain bike program. And with, if all the stars align and we get the equipment needed to do this, we're really hoping to start some adaptive downhill mountain biking, as well as adaptive cross-country mountain biking on the wonderful Nordic trails as well. Beyond that, we're also increasing our Nordic skiing operations and hope to be doing more adaptive Nordic skiing in the Girdwood Valley, expanding on what we're doing in Anchorage Bowl with adaptive Nordic programs. Aside from that, my hope is that the, I've noticed an uptick in people reaching out, asking about facility use. So we're hoping to really increase the number of people using our facility for community-based events.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Summer activities are great. Any other questions from the board? If not, we will move on to the second presentation, which is Girdwood Arts Institute.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you for your time, Nate.
Hi, everyone. This is Mariam Devay here, representing the arts camp. Can you hear me well?
Yes, we can, or I can.
I was hoping to share my screen. Let's see. And have a little presentation going, pictures in the background. Let's see if it works.
You should be able to.
Yep, thank you. Yes. Hold on just a sec. I'm sharing, but I want to see if I can turn off the sound. Bear with me. Maybe not. Okay. Anyway. Okay, so. And if it's choppy, let me know. How does that look?
We're not getting sound. It's a little choppy on my end.
A little choppy on your end?
It's better now.
It's better. Do you hear the sound?
I do not, no.
Good. We don't need the sound right now. So Girdwood Arts Camp is in its fourth decade, not as old as Challenge Alaska, but we are in the third fourth year of operation. And we have, our main camp is every summer, we close the camp at Challenge Alaska. We graciously provide almost discounts on the rent for us, and we host the camp two consecutive weeks every summer. But we have been adding winter arts camp classes for kids and also adult classes during the summer as part of our art camp. So we have been expanding our programs for the past few years. We have camps for kids ages five to eight and intermediate camps for ages nine to 15. And we also host focus intensives during the art camp period in summer. And we we are happy to see full enrollments, which demonstrate the need for the art education in the valley. And we are happy that the past two years, we were able to host camp under these COVID circumstances and will not spread it. So that is a success in its own way. So happy that our safety measures have worked. And primarily, our safety measures for COVID situation are limited enrollment. We have cut our enrollment in half, which really affected our tuition numbers, tuition amounts. So, but we wanted to create some physical space in between the kids. We also require mask wearing, both for kids and for staff. So that seems to have worked. We have reasonable fees. We haven't changed our fees in the past nine years. And we want the art education to be accessible to the Girdwood kids who don't always have the time and resources to drive to encourage programs. And particularly in the past couple of years, the art education for art programs, in-person art programs have decreased again because of COVID. So the need for in-person programs is there and we are trying to provide that opportunity. And GBOS funds support our sibling scholarships, which we are very happy to offer the families of Girdwood. This year, we had five scholarships, sibling scholarships, both in intermediate and primary camps. And we enjoy a lot of volunteer support. We welcome volunteers at the camp and family members, parents and caregivers come and pitch in. We also are happy for all the local businesses and other nonprofit organizations support for the art camp. Local businesses that donate to us, School Line, Big Shop, that provide lunches for our artists and staff at a significant discount. Lions Club provided tents this year and the past, and last year as well, to provide outdoor seating for our students to increase physical distances, distancing and provide outdoor space so that there's less, as a safety measure again for COVID. And Glacier Valley Transit helps us with rides to the playgrounds. Every what are you watching there? I think we need to stop this. Yeah, okay. So I'm stopping, stop sharing screen now. All right. Going. So every, every second year, we work on the playground mural. And this coming year, 2022, we will have, we will repaint the mural at the playground. So Glacier Valley Transit helps us get the kids there. And of course, Challenge Alaska provides a space, again at an enormous discount. I think a fraction of the price that they should be, they usually, well, they should be charging us. So we're very grateful for that partnership and for their assistance. And of course, collaboration, we have very important collaboration with the Four Valleys, who handle our registration and the communication with the parents and families. So that's, that's very valuable to us and we're very happy for that partnership. And see. We, this year, we had 46 kids and seven teen and young adult apprentices. And our teen apprentice, apprentice program has been developing in the past few years, and it's growing and blossoming. And we're, we're getting more comfortable with guiding the teenagers and helping them step into, into leadership role. And they, we have recurring, repeating, returning apprentices. So they are learning more and they're becoming more and more comfortable each year. So that's, that's a really wonderful, it's a wonderful thing to see. For next year, we estimate 70 kids as usual. Usually, we have between 70 and 80 kids. We're hoping to get back into the normal routine. This year, again, I mentioned, we cut the enrollment in half. That's why we had 46 kids instead of 70 to 80. And our funding comes from GBOS. We've been grateful to receive funding from GBOS for many years. We also have funding from the State Council on the Arts, KMTA, Pickle Give, individual donors, Forest Fair Committee, Atwood Foundation, and a few, sometimes Car Foundation as well, and Rasmussen the past two years. And of course, individual donations as well. For the, for this year, the GBOS funding usually goes towards sibling scholarships and apprentice salaries. So that's what happened in 2021. We had 5,450 money in GBOS grant, and a quarter went to sibling scholarships and two-thirds went to apprentice salaries. And I wanted to speak, to let apprentices speak about the program. If you don't mind, can I have three minutes to share another video? Is that okay?
Yeah, sure.
All right.
We should get audio this time, I hope.
Yes, I will this time. I will, yeah. Let's see. This one. One more try. Computer sound, yep.
We've all learnt a lot about meeting technology this past year.
How's that? You see it? Please let me know. You don't hear the sound. Well, there's no sound right now, but it will come shortly.
As a child who has been to the art camp.
Could you hear it? Okay.
Yes.
For 10 plus years, I can say truthfully, it is a great place for all ages of children. The teachers are wonderful and excellent and encourage art a lot.
Art camp will give your kid a chance to try out a bunch of creative styles and especially give them the resources to really explore.
All right.
Oh, I wasn't.
Oops.
And as a kid, but I really enjoyed
Yeah.
being out with these people. And there's also areas for mental health because it gave me something to do and I'll be by my mind. And it's just fun overall.
I think for the
Could you, could you provide a link to the video? Is it available?
Yeah, sorry, guys. I will, I will send it in the, in the chat.
Thanks. I'd like to watch it later. It's obviously not quite working over Teams, but I'd definitely like to watch it. Thank you.
All right. Well, that was it. And if you have any questions, please ask.
Thanks, Mariam. Are there any questions from the, from the board, from the supervisors? Brianna, please go ahead. Brianna? Please go ahead. Or we might have a mic problem again. Microphone problem, I should say. Okay, do you want to, we'll come back to you, Brianna. Jennifer, do you want to go ahead?
Sure. Mariam, I wanted to ask, on your funding sources, it says parent organization, 1,000, is that where Forest Fair shows up or is that Girdwood Center for the Visual Arts?
Oh, parent, that's us. That's the money we have.
That's you.
Year.
Okay, so you mentioned, you mentioned money from Forest Fair. Is that under gifts and contributions?
Um, yeah, well, it's under grants usually. And we don't get money from the Forest Fair each year, so I think we didn't get anything this year.
Right. So, so that's what I was going to ask about. So for the last two years, you probably didn't, not only did your, not only was your tuition cut, but you also didn't get the Forest Fair grants, is that correct?
Yeah. Well, it's fair to say, that's true. It's not, it's usually not a huge amount. It's about 500 to 1,000.
Okay, okay. All right. So there is no current GCBA involvement?
No.
Right? Is that correct?
Absolutely not, right.
Okay, excellent. Thanks.
Thanks.
Thank you. Brianna, do you want to try and give me your microphone? I'm not able to hear you. Is there a question you could put in the chat? Okay, while you're doing that, Brianna, I just have one quick question. If you, I know normally, as you said, the enrollment is, you know, 60, 70 or something like that. Next year, hopefully, it'll be the same. Does that also increase the demand for sibling scholarships as well by similar amount of?
Yeah, usually, yes, I would, I would expect that, yeah.
Okay, great. There you go. I don't think that was. There we go. I don't know if you got, I can read Brianna's question. Was there something for 2022 for third group, any more students for a different feature? Because I think you had two groups last year in your morning, the two age groups. I think you mean two age groups.
Do
Brianna said she read that somewhere, maybe.
Maybe, you mean an intensive, maybe that's different. So we have the morning and afternoon group for primary kids, different, different kids. And then we have the intermediate session. But we also have intensives that usually in the morning for the older kids. Is that? So that's, that's often what we, what we do. Like this year, we had a morning intensive to make board games with Thalia Wilkinson. Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Great. I think that, Brianna, does that answer your question? Excellent, yes.
Thanks.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mariam.
Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate the time. I love the program.
Appreciate your support.
Thank you. Onto Girdwood Community Club. It's be Lewis.
Hello.
Please go ahead.
I'm Lewis Leonard. I'm hoping you can hear me here.
We can.
Excellent. I'm the president of the Girdwood Community Club, and I want to thank everybody so much for all the past support that we've gotten. It's really served our community well. This grant request is for the operation of the only non-commercial, listener-supported, locally-operated community FM radio station in Glacier Valley. And I'm hoping that Margaret has our logo she can throw up on the screen there for us. The Girdwood Community Club has been providing services to Girdwood for over 70 years. The history of the club is the history of Girdwood. It is truly the local legacy organization, is the oldest institution in Glacier Valley. Glacier City Radio is one of the many projects of the club that have built and defined the area. This grant-funded program falls into eligibility category two. It fills a need in the community that can't be met by the municipality as effectively or efficiently, or is not currently being met by another agency in the community. Glacier City Radio is run by volunteers from management to programming, providing recreational opportunities in our facilities in a diverse audio, music, computer, library, research, skill building, and electronic operating environment, as well as massive recreational listening by residents. FM 88.9 is an economic beacon, attracting visitors and travelers from Anchorage and long turning an arm. Building that we are using in the park was built by the club as Girdwood School in 1950, a few doors down from the Little Dipper Inn in Old Girdwood. When we began radio operations in 1997, our initial investment was about $400 for a five-disc CD changer, a microphone, a build-it-yourself transmitter in a stuff sack, and a TV antenna to spread our minimal signal throughout Glacier Valley. Now, our facilities are a high-quality Class A FM station. We are very fortunate to have received this community's support for the last 22 years to build such an awesome, enduring and endearing resource for our community. We provide a public safety net in times of emergencies. Radio is immediate. It is the only medium that provides fast networking, messaging, communications, and interaction to thousands of people, and it's available to everyone, most everywhere, and it's free. We are a main link in the chain of disaster preparedness. The station is an insurance policy we hope we don't need, but when we do, it has proven over and over to be the most reliable. it has proven over and over to be the most reliable for connecting our community to emergency information. Cell phones, Facebook, or the internet fail in comparison. Ah, there you go. I like that. Thank you. That was our T-shirt logo a couple decades ago. Still one of my favorites. It was, uh, a, a drawing by one of our locals, a black and white originally, and it was colored in by, um, one of our volunteers. So, we were on the air within an hour after the November twenty-eighteen magnitude seven point two earthquake rocked our lives, and we provided emergency phone support for the fire department as their phone system and nine-one-one were not operational. So we shuttled messages from, uh, about a block away from us to them and vice versa. In twenty nineteen, we were on alert along with the fire department for forest fire information and evacuation possibilities as the forest burned in communities all around us, filling our valley with smoke. Since we have only one road in and out of the valley, quick action is necessary for our survival, for everyone's survival here. And in the twenty-twenty year of COVID, just as the pandemic was ramping up in March, we began providing information about how to protect yourself and others from the spread of COVID nineteen, interviewing local and Anchorage doctors and first responders. We aired many COVID and social justice programs and presenters with a large number of voices and subjects, providing a better understanding of many issues, contributing to our good health and wellbeing. Our membership in the Pacifica Radio Affiliate Network provides us with programming from other worldwide stations, as well as allowing KEUL to provide programming to the entire network. Our presenters are ambassadors to the world through Pacifica's Audio Port. We are currently broadcasting forty weekly programs, providing fifty-eight hours of diverse voices from around the planet. Now, why do I say diverse voices when we're talking about some of our music? Well, music is news of the world. Music itself tells stories, and the presenters tell of what's happening in their social sphere in their part of the country. Some of them also prevent arguments, excuse me, present arguments for social justice. All this informs us of the relevancy and how we deal with these issues in our own community. Many organizations in Girdwood use us to pass information about their activities. Local on-air personalities strengthen the sense of community with information on public issues, including community organizing, events, and broadcasts of the Girdwood Board of Supervisors meetings. In addition to our worldly cutting-edge music, our air staff broadcasts hazardous driving conditions and avalanche warnings, passing information from the Girdwood Fire Department on fire danger and road hazards. We participate in the Federal Emergency Alert System that includes tsunami warnings and the child abduction amber alerts. When you add up all the little things that we do, they become big. We are available to the community twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. Free is better than fee. Cable, satellite, cellphone, and internet providers charge you a monthly fee with a credit check. KEUL broadcasting comes to you for free. We're in your cars and on your home radios. Apps on your phone or computer do not come close to matching what broadcasting contributes to local communities. Pandora, Spotify, and the like are not radio. They are not connected to the community nor any of its residents. They provide no community information. They are nothing more than playlists created and streamed from the internet. Every day, we make a positive difference in our community. We provide an anchor where often there seems to be little anchor. The centrifugal forces of modern life are fraying the bonds that tether our citizens to their communities. Broadcasting keeps our citizens connected to our communities and gives them coherence. The enduring value of broadcasting is not something that policymakers should take lightly. The philosophy of supporting KEUL and other local organizations is best stated by a letter to the editor, which stated, "These programs that we support with our tax dollars are what economists call a public good that provide cheap or free services and enhancements to the quality of life for all community members and by design generate little revenue. The airwaves belong to the public, and every one of us has an important part of, point of view to express. At KEUL, we believe there is strength and beauty in our diversity." In most places in the US and the world, the common citizen has no physical access to their broadcast media. Even in the United States, few areas are served by community access broadcasting like Glacier City Radio in the Turning Arm area. We are fortunate here to have a resource like KEUL, and it is volunteers like you all who help protect and develop our community, free speech, and the radio station. We've been visited by Mrs. Simpson's first grade class for several years to record bear aware public service announcements for which the class won an award, as well as other school on-air visits over the years. Tiger Cubs have visited the station to work on their communication merit badges. Many world-class and local musicians have stopped by to give live on-air performances. KEUL operations continued uninterrupted through the COVID pandemic, and our operational costs continued on, as did our services. With the current economic setbacks, it is now more important than ever for local entities to bolster the stations that serve their communities. KEUL goes beyond the kaleidoscope of rhythms and music, beyond differing musical genres, subversively upending the tyranny of single music formats, working in complete freedom to create a new paradigm in listening. Patterns of music make sense of our inner experience, giving both structure and coherence to our feelings and emotions. It is because music possesses this capacity to restore our sense of personal wholeness in a culture which requires us to separate rational thought from feelings that many people find music so life-enhancing that it justifies existence. Music is news of the world. When you go to mark up your evaluation worksheets, remember we have an excellent track record, quite reasonable fees, adequate facilities, funding from local businesses. We meet all the definitions of recreation and have good volunteer support. Thank you again for considering the Girdwood Community Club and Glacier City Radio in your perks and recreation grant program. Uh, now I'm open for questions or comments.
Thank you very much, Lewis. Appreciate it. Any questions from the board? Amanda, please go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Lewis, um, and thank you for all that you do there. Um, I was just wondering if there's any, um, forethought for the future in having it be streaming online, um, the radio station?
Well, that's a big question, and thanks for that. Uh, we've, that's been tumbling in our minds for quite a while. It costs a lot of time and money to do that. It's not just simply put out a stream. Um, we have to pay, we, we pay fees to, uh, over the air to, to do, to, to air music. We pay it to three different organizations. It's probably in the realm of twenty-five hundred dollars a year to do that. We also have to pay extra fees to different organizations to stream. We also have to pay a streaming provider for the bandwidth, and then we have to, monthly, we have to submit a playlist of everything that we do, and that, that in itself is a pretty intensive item. I, I, I've tackled this problem. I call it a problem. I wish it wasn't. I, I've tackled this myself on a couple of occasions. I've had two other people try to figure out how we can do this. Um, we've been collecting money and putting it in the bank to, to, uh, to be able to do this. And so to answer your question, yep, we, we would certainly love to stream and we'd like to be able to get it together to, to do that. Um, I, but I, I can't see it happening at the moment, but Brett, we are. I wish we could.
Yeah, well, thank you for, uh, the effort, and, um, I hope it does become easier and possible, so.
Thank you, yeah, I hope so too.
Thank you, Amanda. Thank you, Lewis. Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much again for your presentation. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
And I appreciate what you do as well, Lewis. Okay, let's move on to Glacier Valley Transport, or Transit, sorry.
Hi, um, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I'm gonna try to share my screen, because I have a little slideshow. But I don't know if it's working. Nope. Oh wait, here it is. Sorry. Well, it's not letting me get to my slideshow for whatever reason, so I'll just go on without it. Um, I'm gonna start with a kind of a brief overview, not overview, but background of GBT for anyone who may not know. Um, prior to two thousand eight, there was no public transportation in Girdwood. There was only a resort-operated shuttle, and its primary function was to get people around the resort. It basically went from the back parking lot to the tram loop to the day lodge, back to the hotel with some occasional loops, out as far as the Double Muskie. And it took people in the summer to the train station. There was no option for the general public or locals for transportation. So GBT was established in two thousand eight to kind of fill that need, um, for locals to be able to get around and, um, the public transportation system has definitely provided a means for employees to get to work, as well as visitors and locals to get around town as needed, past the Double Muskie. Uh, we became a five-on-one C-three in twenty-ten, and we are now overseen by a community board. Um, it's five, we have five local community members on our board. Uh, we operate under a management agreement with LIESCA. Through that agreement, we lease our employees, which allows us to offer them benefits. Any benefit that any, um, LIESCA employee gets, our employees get as well. And LIESCA just, uh, kind of provides us some HR and admin support, um, in that agreement. Um, public transportation is very beneficial to the community, and in Girdwood, it facilitates recreation opportunities for visitor, visitors and locals alike. Many people use the bus to get to Trailheads, to get to the mountain, go skiing and riding, to go to Moose Meadows, go to the parks, restaurants, businesses, the Gird Bird, anywhere. Um, and it reduces the traffic and the need for parking during peak times, and especially in summer events. The majority of our funding comes from FTA fifty-three eleven rural transportation grant funds, and the remainder of our funding comes from service contracts with local businesses, business sponsorships, MOA, an MOA grant, this grant, and local donations from riders who take the bus. In twenty-sixteen, we changed our service from a fixed route service with a fee to, and that's where we went fare-free with the Flex Route. This is our fifth year of being fare-free, and it has really enhanced our, uh, financial sustainability. It's actually been amazing. It's really working well for us. It is the only thing that allows us to continue to provide public transportation. It's because of the way our grants are structured and remain financially self-sufficient. Um, just like everyone else, we had some big challenges with COVID. Uh, we are very fortunate that we received FTA Care's Act funding that allowed us to operate continuously through the entire pandemic. We did reduce our hours and changed our routes a little bit, or just the time between routes. But we managed to run every day, um, and we didn't have to lay anybody off. So that was very important, because it would be terrible to have to, especially now with staffing issues, to have, had to replace them if they moved on. Um, in twenty-nineteen, our, we were almost at ninety-five thousand riders and had about twenty-seven thousand dollars in local donations onboard. And in twenty-twenty, that decreased significantly to twenty-six thousand riders and maybe seven thousand dollars in local donations. Fourteen thousand of those riders were locals, so people were still using it to get to work, to get to the grocery store or wherever they needed. So there is still, was still a local need for it, even if we didn't have the visitors. Um, since June of twenty-one, our ridership and onboard donations are definitely on the rise, but they're still greatly reduced. But we are hopeful that we'll see an uptick in that and over the next couple of years get back to our twenty-nineteen numbers. Uh, one of the things that most people were sad about at GBT was that COVID, we had to, with COVID, we had to, go virtual with Turkey Trot, because we, everybody loves that and on our board. But this year, we're hoping to be able to do, and fingers crossed, an in-person community fun run again on Thanksgiving, so. Hopefully that works out, and, um, we just want to thank everyone for their continued support. GBT has come a long way in the past couple of years, and it's because of the support of Girdwood. We couldn't do it without our community. And that's it. If anyone has any questions?
Thank you very much, Dawn. Um, any questions from the board? I have a quick question about the fifty-three eleven funding. Um, is that a, is there any sunset clause or anything else on that, on that funding? Or does it look as if that will continue, you know, for the foreseeable future? Because that's obviously the, the fifty-three eleven, because that's obviously the crucial part of it. Does it look stable?
It does. We are, there is a question of, um, whether or not the ferry is gonna try to tap into it.
Alright.
And if they do, they won't get the whole pot, but it will reduce everybody else's share of the pot, so it could.
Oh, it's a block grant, is it?
Yep, so it's a formula grant, and then, so it's administered by the state, and there's, I think, eleven other, uh, rural transit companies that apply for it in Alaska. So if, if they decide to go for it, it would, they wouldn't get it all, but it would definitely reduce everybody else's share of it, the way it's distributed. So that was.
Thank you for that. Very interesting and obviously of potential concern. Thank you. Any questions from the board? Any other questions? Jennifer, please go ahead.
Yeah, just one other question, Mike. A follow-up on your question is, uh, which line item is that? Is that the rural transit grant?
The fifty-three eleven, yes. That is our, our rural transit funding. I think it's, that's how it's.
That's the line where it says?
Yeah.
Three sixty-two, two-one-three, yeah, okay.
Right. So that's where most of our funding comes from. We just have to get local match to cover the shortfall of that.
Right, okay, thanks.
Thank you. Um, the other question, doesn't see any other questions? So thank you very much, Dawn. Really appreciate it.
You're welcome.
And, uh, now we will move on to Little Bears.
Mike, I have a comment, um, for you, actually.
Yeah, sure.
No, no, I just raised my hand. Um, I didn't think about the fact that, um, LIESCA sponsors, uh, Glacier Valley Transit. I should have mentioned that as a conflict. I'm sorry.
Okay, yeah, I think.
I, I'm an employee of LIESCA, sorry.
I think we draw it in this case as not a, uh, as not a, not a conflict.
Okay.
But thank you, thank you for bringing that to our attention. Appreciate it. Okay, so let's move on to Little Bears. So Camille?
Yeah, hi.
Hello, welcome.
And it looks like Margaret's got my, uh, little PowerPoint pulled up. Um, Margaret, if you want, I can just give you a cue when to go, um, because what my little situation here is not quite exactly the same. Does that work for you?
Yep.
Cool. I love a good team effort. Alright, well, we can go ahead and go to the next slide. Um, Little Bears has been the main provider of childcare in the Girdwood Valley for thirty-eight years and continues to deliver a quality program for this community's youngest residents. We have worked successfully, um, from transitioning our program from what used to be just a daycare to what is now a professional learning center that is licensed for children ages one to nine years old. And over the last decade, we've really tried to adhere our program to serve, um, this community's ever-changing needs and to maintain our quality of services. Our staff, uh, receives ongoing training throughout each year, and early childhood education, and provides developmentally appropriate activities that enrich every child's experience. And it's actually, uh, pretty exciting. Um, within the next two years, half of our staff are going to be officially certified nationally and professionally accredited by the CDA, um, which, uh, I know that sounds like just a lot of words to you guys, but for me, I'm just like, yes. Um, uh, throughout our. Throughout our program, we utilize a formal curriculum design, assess the developmental needs of each child and provide an environment that ensures that children will have every opportunity for success once they move on to the public school system. Any other programs in this community for this particular age do not compare to the services that we provide. We are basically the only ones doing what we do here. And you're so good at this, Margaret. You're already on it. Currently, we have 12-plus families on our waiting list for our program. Being the only certified childcare center in the Girdwood community, we have certainly felt the pressure of trying to help all of these families. And anybody who's lived in Girdwood in the last even five years can say that the amount of small families and children coming into this place and needing childcare, it just, it is not going away. If anything, it is getting more and more necessary. We just started our school year with 15 preschoolers and nine toddlers scheduled every day, Monday through Friday. But unfortunately, those numbers are where we are in capacity in each classroom. We're also unable to accommodate infants. That would be children between the ages of 12 to 18 months most days due to mandated ratios in the classroom that we receive from licensing. You can go ahead and go to the next one for me, Margaret. The board members and administrative staff have gone great lengths to promote awareness for our new building development. If you've been in Girdwood and have been at these meetings and, or if you live a stone's throw away from our facility, you know that we need a new building. We review our annual fundraisers and examine new ways to secure funding. In the past, we've had two fundraisers each year, one in the fall and one in the spring. But unfortunately, due to the pandemic, we have not had a public fundraiser since the fall of 2019. We were faced with a loss of three months of income during our initial closure in the beginning of 2020. And then, once we reopened, our center was forced to have limited enrollment in order to comply with CDC guidelines and keep the classrooms as safe as possible. And obviously, this significantly impacted any funds that we had saved. Luckily, we were able to secure a PPP loan, but that was used to retain staffing. We also received the Childcare Block Grant, which we have been using to reimburse families and staff and not hold them financially responsible should they need to quarantine, isolate, should there have been a COVID exposure or positive test. We also would typically receive donations throughout the year from past members as well as generous community members. But of course, given this current circumstance of the pandemic, that has significantly decreased as well. You can move on to the next one for me, Margaret. After not being able to fundraise for two years, we have still been able to operate our existing program, but certainly not to its full potential. Without this grant, we will have to limit our program supply purchases and review the number of staff members that we employ, which will impact the overall quality of our program significantly. In addition to the cuts above, we will have to limit our staff training opportunities, which will have a noticeable impact on the quality of the program and activities that we deliver. And as I mentioned before, super exciting. We do have multiple staff members currently being trained for that national certification. And having that level of expertise in our program is essential to its growth and improvement. We would also have to raise our rates for our current members and any new members coming in. And this will make our services unaffordable for many families in our community, thereby impacting local businesses in a negative way, which, you know, have, they've already been pretty negatively impacted severely in the last one and a half years as it is. If you want to move on to that next one, Margaret. In recent years, directing an early childhood program has become more complicated due to increasing regularity and licensing demands and expanding knowledge base in the field. And we have tried to really rise to meet all of those needs and as that progresses. But this, coupled with the pandemic and COVID-19's effect on society, has made a significant impact on the roles that our staff members play in our center. Not only are we putting ourselves at risk each and every day, but we're constantly cleaning, performing health checks and trying to meet the emotional needs of multiple children during what is understated a very unstable time in their life. This has completely changed the environment of early childcare centers, especially on staff. It has increased amounts of stress and taken a noticeable physical, mental and emotional toll on every single one of us that works in that building. You can go on to the next slide for me, Margaret. Of course, another way that we have been trying to look to expand our program and our overall income is by expanding our physical space. As you and many know, we are looking into a new facility. If we could accept more children, we could increase our bottom line as well as provide needed services for a larger segment of this community. Obviously, this process is slow, but our board is determined to continue to look for ways to improve and expand our program. In the past, there have been people who have wondered if Little Bears truly fit the definition of recreation to be eligible for this grant money. But according to the definition that Parks and Rec provides, there's absolutely no question that we qualify. The Little Bears program directly benefits children by promoting, promoting opportunities for age-appropriate activities that foster positive physical, emotional, social and academic development. Our staff is trained and continues to train to provide activities that enhance specifically targeted motor and social skills. Our children are exposed to a wide variety of activities that expand their interests and increase their quality of life and school readiness. And our program directly measures their physical, social and emotional development through skill checklists that we frequently document of behavior patterns, team conferencing when needs are specific to individual children and et cetera. So in closing, there really is no greater investment for our community than our children. And I know that a lot of people can agree with that, but I can personally confidently agree. And we believe that our program provides children with the skills and qualities that they need to become successful members of the Girdwood community. And if you want to go to that last one, Margaret, so everybody can see all those cuties holding up the thank you sign. Thank you for considering our request.
Thank you very much. Okay, any questions from supervisors? So possibly slightly unfair question. What do you think, what do you think the total, the complete demand, the total demand is? I mean, if you, if space wasn't limited, how many, how many kids do you think you could, there would be a demand to, to have in Little Bears?
Are we, are we imagining that we have a building with the space for them as well?
Let's, let's, let's just, let's dream, let's dream big. If there was space and staff, I mean, what do you think the, I just wondered what the total demand would be?
Well, given the fact that, well, I was just going to say, given the fact that we're already serving 40-plus families, but we still have 12 on the waiting list. I think that it wouldn't be crazy to imagine that if, if, if we had this space, that that would probably, we'd be serving 70-plus families, I think. And, you know, some of those families have siblings, so you could imagine that's, you know, more than one child. For not every single one, but it would, it would, it would be significantly different.
Yeah.
And this is Lauren. Sorry, I'm chiming and piggybacking off her, Camille. This is Lauren, the director. Yeah, I would agree with Camille's number and even go as close to possibly 100 families. Since we are licensed to service ages one through nine, we've always had in our plan to bring back before and after-school programs. So that just opens it up to the older kids. So I really feel like we would be able to service a lot more families. And a lot of families who just hear how hard it is to get in, don't even waste their time, you know. Unfortunately, like we've gotten that response that they don't, you know, they don't even try to get in with us.
So it's not just, it's not just the existing. It's not just the people who are existing using it, plus the waitlist. It's obviously people who know there's a waitlist and don't see they're not even adding to it.
And then all the infants too that we can't service, there's definitely a lot.
Definitely a strong need. Any other questions from supervisors? If not, I will, thank you very much indeed for the presentation. And thank, we will obviously come back with some numbers fairly soon. Okay, so we'll move on to last and definitely not least, Four Valleys.
Hi, everybody.
Please go ahead.
Hi, everybody. My name is Catherine McDermott and I work for Four Valleys Community School, nonprofit based here in Girdwood and specifically serving Girdwood, the greater Girdwood community. It's our 41st year providing community education here in the valley. And our mission is to provide community education and recreation for all ages, focusing on recreational offerings and lots and lots of different educational enrichment programs. From October 2020 to October 2021, we have been able to provide 700 hours of classes and programs with 1,300 enrollments into those programs. We have administered 130 classes in the, over the past year. These numbers are way down from 2019, which was the last year that we were able to operate normally. We generally average about 1,900 enrollments into about 180 to 200 classes a year. So we're down, but we're really proud of what we've been able to pull off with super limited availability in places to rent and in being able just to generally bring people together. And since we only had two months of normal operations in 2020, I'm choosing to not compare 2020 to 2021. I'm sticking with my 2019 numbers. After a year like 2020, I'm happy to report that Four Valleys has certainly found its stride again and we are working towards full recovery. With the global pandemic, we are still very much impacted within our programs. It's still keeping us from operating as normal. And GBOS grant funds have been really vital for us to be able to keep our doors open and then allowing the community school to be able to offer programs to Girdwood residents at costs that are reachable to all income levels so that everybody has access to recreation and enrichment opportunities. The GBOS grant has truly supported and subsidized our programs. And in 2021, we've been able to offer a huge variety of classes for Girdwood that utilize our community assets from buildings to volunteers. And, and these classes have included outdoor youth soccer. We've had 100 kids in our program this last summer participating at the Arlberg Soccer Field. The Girdwood Rotary partners with us, so we were to be able to purchase four new nets and two new, the big full-field nets along with soccer field maintenance supplies. And we're currently running an indoor soccer program with about 35 kids using the Girdwood K-38 school gym. We offered swimming lessons. We had about 30 kids participating in that. And ALIESCA Resort was very flexible and helped us facilitate that program within their COVID parameters to allow it to happen. We offered our first ever mountain biking club for kids with about 20 kids participating and ALIESCA allowed us to use their lower mountain trails. And we used the flow trails off the 5K loop as well as the 5K. We've worked with the Girdwood Nordic Ski Club to expand our Nordic offerings this past winter. We were able to offer adult skate and classic lessons for about 50 local adults this past season. The Four Valleys Community School Nordic Ski Club for ages five to 12 had about 50 people, kids participating. And we utilized Moose Meadows for that, the Nordic 5K and the Upper Valley Trails. We were able to offer adult workout classes both via Zoom and in person when the weather allowed us to be outside, reaching about 30 local adults. We were able to use the Girdwood Community Room as well as outdoor areas at the Girdwood School. We also offered some yoga classes by donation and reached about 20 adults with those offerings. This fall, we've been able to hold the, our cross-country running program for grades kindergarten through sixth grade. We had 70 kids enrolled in that program this fall. We based that out of the Girdwood K-38 school and run on the trail systems encompass the school, including Tiny Creek Trail, the Iditarod Trail, Water Road and the Beaver Pond Trail. Other recreational classes we've offered have included Kung Fu, family and friend open gym times last spring, pickup basketball for adults, table skills and several other classes as well. Each year, we partner with the Girdwood Fine Arts Camp to help them with the administration of their art camp. But this past winter, we worked with Tommy to provide winter art camp options and, and a after-school arts class based out of the Girdwood Chapel. And the Girdwood Chapel folks were very generous, allowed us to use their space when we had no other facility to base out of and at a, at a very reasonable rate. We offer different classes ranging from paper mask making, print making, mini paint class, Fimo pins, holiday cards, paper taxidermy and more, including a digital art series as well. And yeah, the, the Girdwood Art Camp volunteers are really instrumental into making those classes happen. We even offered ice carving on New Year's Day. Our summer camps for youth included eight different adventure camps, reaching 150 kids with themes from field sports to green planet, wild art, nature's market, wilderness skills, fossils and geology, adventures in science and tides and ecology. These programs operate from June through August and heavily rely on the use of existing community assets like Forest Fair Park, the Arlberg Soccer Field, the baseball field, the pavilions, further highlighting the importance of Girdwood Parks and Rec for maintaining and permitting use of these important facilities. Other important community assets that we utilize daily are our local volunteers. While some of our programs I reviewed have paid instructors, like our adventure camps and Kung Fu, almost all of our recreational offerings use volunteers. And this past year, we had over 120 volunteers committed to helping us lead and engage our community for classes of all ages. This fall, we are back at the Girdwood K-38 school and we currently have about 20 classes open for registration. The affordability of our programs will continue to be a huge issue going forward because we need to reduce the number of people who can take our classes in person. That has increased our payroll because we also have to adhere to some COVID mitigation, COVID mitigation protocols within the Girdwood School. The GBOS grant has been especially helpful in helping us sustain and subsidize our class prices. It allows us to offer classes that are affordable for local families. And it allows us to have, in the midst of this pandemic, we've been able to offer lots of classes with very, very small class sizes, keeping the health of our community in mind. And at a minimum, it provides about a 20% reduction in class prices to the local community, depending on the class. As winter closes in on the Girdwood Valley, the role of the community school is very important for the social, mental and physical health of this community. And as I mentioned, this is our 41st year providing community education and recreation for Girdwood. We are very proud to be a legacy nonprofit with the community of Girdwood in our Berry DNA that created us. And we plan on remaining a viable entity and providing service to Girdwood for now and forever. And we will continue to show up for Girdwood as best we can and hope to rebound and get back to our 2019 numbers this next year. The DBOS grant allows us to do that. Thank you very much for the support of our program and I hope I can answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much, Catherine. We appreciate it. Any questions from the board? That includes typed questions if that's the, if your mic still isn't working, Brianna?
Thank you, Mike. This is Brianna. Can you hear me?
Oh, good. Yes, we can. Excellent.
Yeah. Well, I could come up with a question for you, Catherine. Thank you for your great presentation too. And it's, it may not really affect this. But for transportation, would the shuttle or any other possibility start looping the school to the community room or a location if classes are off-site, like at the church?
Yeah, I think you broke up a little bit in that question. I think you're, you're asking if we use the, the Girdwood Transit for our classes?
Well, if it's a possibility someday or something, that's.
Yeah, well, I mean, we have, definitely we use, we do use them during the summer. There are definitely times where, in general, we ask the kids to bring their bikes and we have them bike themselves around from location to location. But when the weather's bad, we have certainly called for, for shuttle service. And, and we haven't, you know, we, we would specifically build that into one of our classes if we did use it. It's definitely been, been available to us to use in the past. And we wouldn't hesitate to use them in the future.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Thanks. I'm not seeing any more questions. I think, I don't think that's a, it's probably just that we're very familiar with Four Valleys. Yeah, I'd just like to wrap up. Thank you very much indeed to all the presenters. One thing, I really enjoyed this meeting. It's one of my most fun meetings of the, of the year. Maybe one could say that isn't a very high bar, but it's, it definitely is a very, a very fun meeting. The thing I really enjoy is the, is hearing all the stories about how all the nonprofits are collaborating with each other. It definitely feels, it just reminds you what a great community this is and how, how we all work together and rely on each other for different, different activities. Anyway, again, just a thank you to, to everybody. And as Margaret mentioned earlier, we have to go away and do our evaluation forms. And I believe it's the next GBOS meeting, isn't it? On November the fifteenth, when we'll be discussing this formally. Or Jennifer, please, do you have a comment?
Yeah, sorry. I, I have to apologize to all you guys. I didn't realize until we were well into that, that I probably had my own disclosures. And so I know throwing this in at the end is not how this is supposed to go. And I don't know that they're relevant, but just in case, realizing as I listen to that speaking in that mic, that my family is enmeshed, actually. So I feel like I should just go ahead and disclose that I volunteered with Challenge. My kids went through art camp, and I think my daughter continued up until two years ago. We are annual contributors to the radio. My son used Girdwood Valley Transit to and from his ice cream job, and both kids grew up in Little Bears and Four Valleys. I, I mean, I can't think of a single year up until the last, up until COVID, that some member of my family was not enrolled in some class at Four Valleys. So that's my disclosure.
Again, I think that, you know, this just underlines again how important all the nonprofits are to the community. And again, a huge thank you to everybody. We do have to go through, and sorry, just to do the formal part, yes. We, none of those would be raised to the level of significant, a significant conflict. One of the actual tests we do is, is this something which is unique or, you know, is only a small part of the community has this conflict or is you know, a significant part of the community have this conflict? And I think a significant part of the community is involved in all of these nonprofits. Either as a, you know, beneficiary, a contributor or, you know, volunteer. So getting no conflict to, no conflict to, to concern ourselves with nothing that rises to serious. Again, thank you to everybody. We do have to go through public comments. So I'll just, for the record, persons offering public comment must state the full name and address. Public comment is limited to three minutes per person and must be on subjects not listed on the agenda. Would anyone like to make a public comment? Not seeing anyone. We can move to adjournment. And again, thank you, thank you to everyone who presented tonight. Much appreciated, both for your work and for the presentation itself.
This is Brianna. I'll move to adjourn.
Okay, thank you. Bye, everybody.
Thank you, everyone.
Bye.
Thanks, everyone.